Order the planning commission meeting for April 16, 2020. Then how do we, how do you want to do the roll call?
I'll go ahead and take the roll call vote if you don't mind.
Okay.
So we have Commissioner Ahie, Commissioner Bodnar. Not present. Commissioner Bresic? Commissioner Bresic?
It me, uh, she's leaving.
Okay. Commissioner Lee?
But I'm here.
Yes?
All right.
I'm here.
Commissioner Meadows?
Here.
Commissioner Merrick? I heard his voice earlier.
Yeah, I hear it. Yeah, I'm here, yes.
And Commissioner Semic? No response there.
This meeting is now being recorded.
So we have a quorum. We have five commissioners present.
Okay. Um, so I guess first up, uh, public comments on items not on the agenda. Uh, is there anyone that has a comment on anything not on the agenda?
I...
No? Okay.
No.
Um, so then next up, we'll do the consent calendar, uh, for the planning commission minutes from March 5, 2020. Uh, I'm not sure if anyone has any comments on that meeting. No? Okay. Uh, someone would, yes, sorry. Okay.
I second the motion, which was hard to hear, by the way.
Oh, is it better if I'm closer?
Yes.
Okay, I will be more careful.
Okay, so a motion and a second, um, and then, oh, should we do a roll call for, for this as well?
Yes.
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 Um, John.
For the motion to approve the minutes, Commissioner Ahie?
Yes.
Commissioner Bresic?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Meadows?
Yes.
And Commissioner Merrick?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two, two absences.
Okay, great. So, um, we will move on to the public hearing, zoning text amendment ZTA 20-0001. Uh, so I'll hand it off to Guido for the staff presentation.
Thank you. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, we're all here tonight, uh, to update the city's accessory dwelling unit, um, changes pursuant, pursuant to state law. So just some of my own credentials, uh, I am an AICP certified planner. I have 16 years of urban planning experience, and this is the third time I'm rewriting an ADU ordinance. So why are ADUs such an important cog of the state's desire? Um, well, because land's already there. You're not going to make more land in Los Altos, so creating ADUs, um, is an easy way to onboard additional housing units. Uh, John Biggs and I went to a State of the Silicon Valley, uh, conference about a month and a half ago, and if only 25% of the eligible Bay Area properties build ADUs, that will be approximately 186,000, um, new units that will be built in the greater Bay Area. So it's a very quick and efficient way for the state to hopefully get some additional units. We're also here because of job and, and that. Uh, within the last 12 months prior to this whole COVID crisis, there were approximately 55,000 jobs that were created in the greater Silicon Valley, and there were only 7,000 housing units that were built. Um, just to further elucidate the point, if Santa Clara County, just the county itself, was a state, it would have a gross domestic product of about $316 billion. The entire state of Colorado's GDP is only about $341 billion. So we have a huge jobs-to-housing imbalance, and ADUs is just one part of a multi-pronged approach to streamline development, uh, for all cities. So I'm going to quickly go through some of the bills and their implications. So SB 13, um, impact fees cannot be assessed on ADUs that are less than 700 square feet. ADUs can be counted towards your arena number. Um, if a garage is considered replaced, something cannot be required. If you have an ADU that's more than 750 square feet, the city can charge impact fees, but it has to be proportionate to the size of the main principal dwelling unit. For utilities, there was a question that came up, uh, this week regarding utilities. For attached ADUs within a single-family dwelling, no utility connection or additional capacity can be required. For detached ADUs, the city can require separate utilities, but once again, uh, the connection fees and the capacity charges must be proportionate to the size of the main house. AB 68, lot coverage and lot size cannot be used for a criteria for an ADU ordinance. The ADU, the ADU application must be approved within 60 days of a completed application. And lots, FAR, open space, and other design standards cannot prohibit the development of an 850-square-foot ADU. CC and ARs are voided if they prohibit the building of an ADU, and the city is required in its next housing element to incentivize and promote ADUs. So in total, each property is allowed a 500-square-foot junior ADU by right within a house, and an 850-square-foot detached ADU by right. There are no parking requirements for a junior ADU, and there are no parking requirements for an ADU within an existing carport or garage, and no parking requirements for an ADU if it's near transit or a part of a car-share vehicle program. So this is just a group of what could occur on family lots in Los Altos. You can have the house with a junior ADU within the confines of the house and a detached ADU. Or you can have a house with an attached ADU. Or you can have two detached ADUs and 25% of a multifamily area be converted for ADU. Now I'm going to go through some of the comments that I received from not only staff, but also members of the community. Um, I am requesting an amendment to the ordinance as drafted to allow for parking on interior side yards, which is required by law now anyways unless there's a special finding of fact made as to why it's not allowed. Um, this is a question for the commission later on. Uh, we wrote, uh, into the draft ordinance that if an ADU is four feet or less from a property line to require a survey, um, certain staff asked if that could be increased to five feet because of some of the irregular-shaped lots, and that really is a question for the commission. Um, you can make an argument both ways. Uh, if you ask for more surveys, that's an additional cost to the property owner. At five feet or four feet, that's really a discretion for the commission. There is a part of the ordinance that I need to strike. Uh, it was, when I crafted the order, this was an error in relation to ADUs above garages. This was a carryover that I inadvertently carried over from another city, so I need to strike that. Now I'm going to move on to some of the comments that I received from the community. Uh, Mrs. Ting Ni, I did forward her letter to the commission. Um, she's requesting that an ADU be taller than 16 feet. Um, at this time, that's not something that as a staff member I can support. Um, going back all the way to 2002, uh, the state legislation encouraged just cities to build ADUs, but to have the ADU be subordinate to the main house. Um, so that's why I'm making the recommendation of the commission to keep the ADUs at 16 feet or less. Uh, by far, the most, uh, comments I got the last week, two weeks was focused on the daylight plane. Um, and then for those not familiar with daylight plane, it is just another way to regulate development. It's like an invisible, uh, cake in the sky to regulate the height and the bulk and mass of projects. Currently, the daylight plane for, uh, Los Altos or accessory structures is at six feet. Uh, the daylight plane goes in at a 512 roof, roof pitch, and then at 12, and then at 10 feet, it goes up to 12 feet. Uh, under the current, uh, state requirements, you would not be able to build, uh, a 16-foot-tall ADU with this requirement. So I did propose in the draft ordinance, um, and a local designer was nice enough to draw this for, for staff. Uh, we did get some feedback from the builders and local contractors that this would be very difficult and challenging. Um, there were questions as to the legality of the daylight plane. Um, I did confer with our city attorney. We can enforce the daylight plane. Um, HCD with HCD before this meeting, they are supportive of a daylight plane. But hearing the comments from the community, uh, and how the difficulty of building, I am recommending to the commission to look at a couple other options. There is a Palo Alto, um, language that has the daylight plane start at eight feet. And I provide, I'm providing a graphic to the commission. Um, the ordinance from Palo Alto asked for the daylight plane to start at eight feet, and for every one foot of additional setback, the daylight plane would go up in height, and that seemed to be supported by members of the community. Additionally, just for, just to provide some context, there's another, uh, some draft language from Santa Cruz. Um, theirs starts at a height of seven feet and then goes in at approximately a 45-degree angle. And I'm relying on, uh, Commissioner Phoebe to provide some feedback as a designer, and as well as other design professionals on the commission, uh, which of the daylight planes they would support and what modifications. Uh, in addition, uh, as part of this HCD process, what they wrote into the laws is they are requiring that after adoption, the city send the ordinance to the state of California within 60 days. Um, I thought it would be prudent to reach out to the state to get their inputs uh, prior to ordinance adoption, just so we don't have to go through this process again. And today at four o'clock, they did provide me some edits, and I will walk the commission through, uh, those edits. Um, I can do this by section, however the commission wants. Um, section 14.030, they asked to make a more general statement just to say ADUs should be allowed within multi- or single-family zones and not list out in the ordinance to make it more general. There was an additional edit to make it clear that JADUs are allowed within the confines of an existing house. Um, there was an additional request of the state to make it clear that even if you have a smaller house, let's say it's 1,200 or 1,000 square feet, the way the ordinance is currently written, it says you can only do a 50% change of the floor area, and the state wanted us to make the edit to be clear that even if, let's say you have a 1,000-square-foot house, if you do a 50% change to the floor area, that would only be a 500-square-foot attached ADU. They wanted it to be clear in the ordinance that state law prevails, and in that case, you would still be able to get an 800-square-foot attached ADU. Uh, the state had some concerns about the 12-foot, um, side yard setbacks for a corner lot. Um, that is a safety concern. I have spoken with the city attorney. Um, the, the state will be getting back to me in the next week, week and a half regarding this. I do feel strongly that we should have that in the ordinance. Most cities don't want to have a lot of buildings or, uh, or bushes at the corner of a property. Let's create a visual triangle. Please raise your hand. Go ahead, Jolie.
Hi, hi. Um, so I just want to let the commissioners know and the public know that, um, we are going to see if we can keep this in our code, and if the HCD just disagrees, I believe that we can still leave it in our code by making findings. But Guido, that's, did they say anything to you about that? Because they review it, and then we can, we can accept their changes, or if we don't accept a change, we need, you know, we can't say that, prove up that it, it is required. Isn't that what they told you?
That's what they, they did say, that, uh, if we do choose to keep this in the ordinance, then we would have to make some additional findings as part of the public hearing process.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, next up, uh, the, the state wanted to be clear, once again, that JADUs are not within accessory structures. They would, there was a provision in the, uh, they asked me to strike. And there was another provision that said the JADU had to have the required side and rear setbacks for fire uh, and public safety, and they felt that that was unnecessary because the JADU has to be within the confines of the house. Uh, the next, uh, edit was, um, there is a part of the ordinance, so a part of the state laws is mandating that JADUs have some type of cooking component. And they wanted to be clear that, um, this does not have to be something built into the wall or some expensive appliance. A hot plate or a countertop cooking would suffice to meet that requirement of state law. So that concludes my initial presentation. I know that was a lot to give the commission. Is rec, the planning commission recommends to the city council, uh, to adopt zoning text amendment 200001 and further find that the project is exempt from CEQA. And now I turn it over to the, uh, commission for any questions, so.
Okay, uh, thank you, Guido. Oh, sorry, this is, uh, Commissioner Ahie. Um, does any, do any commissioners, I see Phoebe's hand was raised. Go ahead, Phoebe.
I had several questions. One of them is our current code, this is reference to the street-side setback on a corner lot. We require 20 feet now, and we're reducing it to 12?
So that was my, uh, recommendation. If the commission wants to include the 20, that's certainly appropriate.
Well, I'm only asking that because the state says four feet, so that's what Jolie was talking about. We can choose to make it bigger on the basis of safety, but I don't believe we're in compliance with the state code if they say minimum four-foot side yard setback.
Uh, and Jolie can, go ahead, Jolie, if you want to.
Well, we're recommending tw, what, am I unmuted?
You are, you are, you are. Now you're, now you muted yourself.
Oh, okay. Um, no, we were, we were proposing 12 feet, correct?
Yes.
And so if the commission thinks that, and you thought 12 would be appropriate, and the HCD, um, pushed back on that, um, if the commission, I mean, then I, I would say we should keep it at 12, um, since we already have, um, run that by the state, but we'll wait, I think we should probably wait and hear back, to hear back from what the state says because, um, we don't want to be too far, um, uh, out of compliance.
Okay.
I had a question. I thought I read somewhere that the JADUs were allowed to have 150 square foot additions if it made it, um, possible to do a JD. Does this ring a bell for anybody else?
Jolie's raising her hand. Go ahead, Jolie. You're muted. I'm muted. There you go. I'm mute. There you go, Jolie. You're still muted. There you go.
Um, this is so backwards for me. And so I understand the 150 square feet is, it can be an additional, um, square footage to a JADU, but it is for access. It's for egress, uh, for access to the unit.
Right.
It's not to make the unit bigger, but if you have to put an entry or a porch or a separate entrance, you get the 150 square feet. That's my understanding.
That's correct.
So my thought was that should probably be in the ordinance in some way. I guess, I had a... I didn't understand a word, uh, that is an actual English word. In Attachment A, page four, item Amens and Barry.
Attachment. Word?
The actual ordinance in, uh, section 1414040, general requirements. What is, if the applicant requests a delay in processing, the 60-day time period shall be told for the period of the delay, what does that mean?
So, I mean, Jolie can speak to the legalities of it, but, uh, my...
What does "told" mean? Told?
Well, to, I mean, so, so for CEQA purposes or for land use, uh, any, so a lot of land use permits now have shot clocks that are written into them. You're probably more familiar with, uh, the wireless antenna shot clocks written into federal law. Uh, for these new ADU bills, within 60, if, if somebody gives a completed application to the city, the city has to approve it within 60 days. The tolling provision is it kind of stops the shot clock. Let me, let me read the exact language. If the applicant requests a delay in processing, the 60-day period shall be told. So the applicant can voluntarily take themselves out of the shot clock.
Okay, my point, I don't believe that's clear language for someone reading the code. That's a term of art?
Okay.
I'm concerned that if you want to say it, you should say that the app request can be done without using a word that someone else might not understand.
Can we substitute suspended for told?
Yes, that makes much more sense.
More sense.
All right, I will, let me do, while we're doing this, let me just do it now so I can keep all the edits clear. I will put these in green. These are the ones the commission asked for. All right, sounds good.
And if you go above AM in that same section to I as in ice cream?
Yep.
I believe that you want to say the accessory dwelling may be served by the primary residence, not serviced by the primary residence?
Served, okay, sounds good.
And I had a question about whether we want to use gas and/or electric utilities.
Served, serviced, oh, served, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
I'm wondering, because of the reach code that's coming, whether we want to include gas and/or electric in this uh, ordinance, if that's going to get changed by our reach code that's coming.
I would have to defer to John on that sort of whole reach code process, so.
At this, at this point in time, I would leave it in there because there might be some outdoor amenities that would, they would be allowed to use gas on.
Okay. Oh, well, the reach code, you'll see. I mean, I think the intent of the reach code is to have no gas.
No gas for indoor appliances, but I understand that some outdoor appliances, like a barbecue, may be permitted to have gas. But that'll, that'll get finalized in the next coming months.
Okay, um, the last thing I wanted to ask about is in item... Still in Attachment A, I'm in 1414050. I'm in something point four, which says the separation from the main house and other accessory structures shall be at least five feet, unless it stops in a neighborhood and is required to be built, in which case the requirement should be waived to be no less than three feet. If it's three feet, you can't have any openings in the basement, I think.
That's correct.
So that might be something, and I will now cede to someone else.
Hold on, I'm trying to write in your, so at three feet, the unit shall not have any opening doors. Isn't it opening door, there's other provisions, doors, and I forgot what the other, okay.
The idea is that it's the fire separation is what we're trying to protect.
Uh, fires.
If someone catches fire, that it shouldn't be able to jump to the next building. That's the intent of the code.
Okay.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute myself and let...
Okay, thanks, Phoebe. Um, Sally, I think you had your hand raised.
I do. Um, I'll, I'll lower it now that I have the, um, the floor. So I, let me go to my questions. Um, it, it's a little difficult, different to get the handle of working with the video in front of you and then all the documents behind and other parts of the screen, so excuse me if I, um, huddle around a bit. Okay, so, um, so along the lines of where Phoebe was talking, under, um, general requirements, it said, uh, I, the, in B, the exception that is spelled out for a JDU, JADU doesn't make sense to me. So the wording is, except for a junior accessory dwelling unit as allowed by state law, an ADU should not be sold or have its title transferred separately from the primary residential structure. So the way that's written makes it sound like the state, uh, the state allows a JDU, JADU to be sold separately from the residence, that it is entirely within the walls of, which of course doesn't make any sense.
Right. You act, you actually are very astute. You picked up on something that the state, when I met with them in four, actually asked me to take out. So, so the word JADU was stricken from that sentence, so thank you for catching that.
Okay, so that, basically, you just re, remove any specific, it just applies to all of them because how in the world would you, anyway, okay, I don't need to believe that, okay. There's, it, it, we should take out except for and, that and needs to be taken out too, except by state law. And I need to let you know that there are some technical provisions of the new ADU law that allows for a unit...
I think we just lost Jolie's...
The ADU ordinance.
Jolie, I couldn't hear you. I don't know, I might have lost your last two sentences.
Oh, I was digging through my papers. There is a section in the new ADU laws that allows for the unit to be sold separately, and, um, and it, and it requires some pretty, um, uh, detailed, um, it, it's going to be hard for it to be included. Um, so it can be sold or conveyed separately from a primary residence, um, if certain conditions are met, like the property or was built or developed by a qualified nonprofit corporation, and an enforceable restriction upon the sale and conveyance of the property exists to ensure the property will be preserved for affordable housing. And it also goes on and on about that. Um, and I think how we have it written in, in the general, except is allowed by state law, um, it shouldn't be transferred because that is a very narrow exception for them to be sold or transferred separately. And Guido, the, um, the state probably, you know, took that out because it, it applies to all of them, I would say, so. Now I'll be quiet. Okay, um, so then, uh, my next two questions, um, kind of tie together, and you had a, at least one slide alluding, um, to this. So in various parts, um, and part of what I'm talking about is also spelled out in, uh, one of the letters from the public, so it was the letter that was withdrawn, but it still had some valuable information in there. So, um, as part of that public input... So, um, as part of that public input, apparently the bills all say that a city shall not require, um, I'm paraphrasing, that a city shall not require maximum square footage for an ADU that is less than eight hundred fifty square feet. But then, in, in a different section of that, the bills, it goes on to say that an eight hundred square foot ADU attached or detached, at least sixteen feet in height, with four foot side and rear, uh, yard setbacks, setbacks must be allowed regardless of FAR and other such criteria on that. So, it talks about those two different things. My reading of that is that eight hundred fifty square feet is actually the max. It's, but it's eight hundred square feet if there's some other criteria that normally we would apply, um, but that, but, um, we're not. But in what you propose, we only talk about eight hundred square feet. Can, so can you please explain that?
Yeah, and, and that's been a confusing part for a lot of people, and, um, so, eight fifty is the requirement for the detached unit, the eight hun, and this is where it, so, when I was on the phone with the guy from the state, so if you have a twelve hundred square foot house, and the way the ordinance is written, it says, and you shall not have more than a fifty percent floor area of the existing or proposed principal residence for the unit, they specifically asked me to put into the ordinance, notwithstanding this requirement, the ADU has to be at least eight hundred square feet. And he cited two different sections of the government code to that effect. So, if you had a twelve hundred square foot house, and you were only able to do fifty percent of it, you would only be able to get a six hundred square foot ADU, but in this case, the state is saying, no, you have to have an eight hundred square foot. So that's where the eight hundred and the eight fifty come into play.
But there's nowhere in the draft that I saw that you actually, so I understand eight hundred comes into play as your minimum max. Well, you have minimum max, if that's the way to describe it, but eight fifty, I mean, very, most houses have, um, are larger than that in Los Altos, so many of them would be entitled to eight fifty, at least as I read the excerpts of the law that were provided by one of the public comments. So therefore, you've not stated the eight fifty anywhere, and everyone, at least myself reading the ordinance, would assume that eight hundred is the max in all criteria in our new proposed ordinance.
Right, and I, can you, I'm still sharing my screen. Can you see my screen in yellow with some strike throughs? Can the commission see?
I don't see strike throughs. I still see your state HCD edit slide, that's what I see.
So, let me, so, uh, so in yellow at eight fifty, that's been added to the ordinance per direction from the state.
We're not seeing, I'm not seeing that.
Guido, you're on slide thirty-two that is showing up. I think you need to switch slides so that you're...
Oh, okay.
To that slide that shows the change that you just described.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, oh, so you're not, oh, you weren't able to see, because I have the ordinance up. I was, uh, trying to fish in, and...
And it was really hard to go back and forth between all the screens, so we understand, we emphasize.
Yeah, let me put, uh, here, let me just add a, a slide so you, you guys can all see it. One second. Right. So eight fifty is the number.
Right, but I didn't see that mentioned anywhere in the draft ordinance. Maybe it was there, but it, all I kept seeing was eight hundred over and over.
So can you see this?
Revised draft.
Well, we never, I never got over, oh, you mean the one he's showing us now?
Yes. Can you see it now, Commissioner Meadows?
Yes, I see that. So, to me, it's a little inside out, because really, eight fifty is the size for a one bedroom or smaller ADU, unless various criteria would lead one to say, oh, you calculate out smaller than that, because, you know, you've got a small house or the far, or whatever the story, but we're still required to give you eight hundred. So to me, eight fifty is the number, and eight hundred is the exception, and things should be written that way. Understood?
At the time that these words came through, the state acknowledged that there was conflict, that some of the ordinance said eight hundred, some of them said eight fifty, and I was hoping by this time, there would have been a ruling from HCD that said, this is what the intent was. So I think Sally's correct. In fact, eight fifty is the largest one bedroom you're allowed to do, but eight fif, eight hundred is what the guaranteed minimum is. This seems kind of stupid.
Yes. Um, and then I have one final question, and it, and it, so it gets down to the, really to eight hundred fifty square feet that we're talking about for a studio or a one bedroom, and then the twelve hundred, um, for a greater than one bedroom ADU. So I think I understand the rationale for that, but I'm going to play devil's advocate and say why, um, we're letting the bedrooms drive the size of, uh, the requirement for the ADU, and is that what we want to do? So why couldn't a one bedroom be twelve hundred square feet? Why does it have to be eight fifty square feet?
I, I, I mean, I can go double check in the, what I believe how it's written, but I mean, I could certainly verify it.
You mean in the state law? Yeah, because I, we, we didn't have that context. I guess I could have looked up all the three laws and, you know, tried to read through them that, that, uh, you know, so I'm going to ask that question. I mean, there could be, I could come up with a rationale as to why we'd want a one bedroom or studio to be eight hundred, and, uh, you know, a greater than one bedroom to be twelve hundred, but I'm just trying to see if you had a rationale for why you put that, that way.
Uh, because I believe I took that straight from the state law, but I can double check right now if you'd like.
All right. So that, that's all my questions, then, thank you.
And I will pull up the, uh, state law, pardon?
Okay. Um, does any other, do any other commissioners have, uh, questions for staff?
Uh, yeah, I just have one, um, or, yeah. It's, uh, regarding the, uh, the JADU, uh, JADU, junior unit, um, and it's regarding the entry. So a separate entrance from the unit to the exterior of the residence and not an interior connection, uh, to the main living room, living area shall be provided. Are you, are you requiring an exterior entry from, uh, for the JADU, or is this, uh, I'm not sure if that's really that clear. Second entry door?
Which, is there, is there a specific, uh, section of the ordinance you want to help me take better?
Yeah, it's in fourteen, fourteen, uh, zero, six, zero.
Okay.
And, um, it's, uh, under F.
A separate entrance from the unit to the exterior of the residence and an interior connection to the main living may be provided. A second interior doorway for sound insulation may also be permitted. So, I mean, generally, you try to have the ADUs have a little bit of privacy, that's generally the thought process. If, if, if there's some way to better word it, uh, be glad to take, take those edits.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I, my atta, my, the, the attachment that I'm reading has a shall be provided.
Yes.
Yeah, and the state at four o'clock said I tried to take out shall and said nay. So if you, I, I think I, I think I've shared my screen now, can you see?
Okay, so, so it's an optional, it's an optional, it's a preference, whether you want it or not.
Yeah, so, but I, I just want to make sure, can the commission see the ordinance, how it's been marked up? It's in yellow and there's highlights and, can you guys see that?
Well, see is the relative word in this case. I see that there's yellow, and I see that there's text.
Okay.
But it's not the same as having read it in front of us, uh, you know, in a...
Oh, I know, I, I just, I've just tried to show that. I've, I've marked it up since you've seen it and I, and I got direction from the state and, so...
Okay, I mean, yeah, from a language perspective, I think that's clearer.
Okay.
But I guess it's optional, okay?
Yeah.
All right. And in terms of the square footages, is there a way, a clear way we can represent the, the square footage requirements, um, or, or, um, yeah, I mean, if you, can you put it in a, in a chart form, so that someone looking at this can really understand it very quickly?
Yeah.
Because, uh, you know, from, just reading this document, it's very confusing, and I think it's, uh, it's, it's being called out, right, by a number of commissioners here?
Okay.
I think also, um, sorry, to add to that, I think that the chart would be really helpful, um, in terms of, um, kind of up to a certain square footage, then this is kind of the minimum, and then past that square footage, then this is the minimum, you know, something like that, because I think seventeen hundred square feet, fifty percent of that, would be eight fifty, but anything below that would be, um, you know, I don't know what they're going to rule in terms of the eight hundred or eight fifty, but something like that might be helpful, so people know exactly, um, what size their house is and what they can get.
Absolutely.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Um, if, if no one else, uh, has a question, I had a quick question about the daylight plane. Um, I, I think I had heard you say that, that legally, um, we could implement a daylight plane. I was just wondering how that could be, um, implemented on top of what the, the state is requiring, um, because if, I, I just wasn't sure how that works in terms of, can we enforce something like that?
Yeah, and let me, let me, I'm trying to, let me go back to my PowerPoint real quick. So we did get quite a few comments on that. Let me pull up the Santa Cruz. Can you see the little forty-five degree angle?
We have standard...
Seven foot for Santa Cruz?
We have standard...
And here, here's the Palo Alto.
Palo Alto.
Yeah, so, so the way the state laws are written, and Jolie can chime in, is they, the, the state was really trying to limit cities' ability to not, or not approve these or to encourage their development, however you want to say it. And so they wrote it to say, yes, you can decide where you want to place them on the lots, yes, you can decide the setbacks, yes, you can do certain things with the height, but you can't prohibit the development of at least an eight hundred and fifty square foot ADU. And so the daylight plane absolutely can be enforced, but it can't be done in such a way that would prohibit that construction. Um, I did speak with Greg Popovich, who is on this call, and after the commission deliberates, will take public comment. Um, I did speak with him, um, he's in support of this Palo Alto daylight plane, um, a couple of the residents that I spoke with who did personally reach out to me, um, so yes, so we absolutely can enforce it, and this does seem to be like a, a compromised daylight plane. Um, but I, like I said, I would defer to the design professionals on the commission if they wanted to chime in on that, for, in of the ordinance.
I'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a comment or two about the daylight plane, if I'm, if I may.
Sure.
Um, the way I look at the daylight plane regulations here in Los Altos, you know, the state says that you can have an ADU up to sixteen feet in, in height, but it doesn't say that you have to allow an ADU sixteen feet in height, four feet away from the property line. So I look at the daylight plane as a way of, uh, trying to achieve appropriate design for accessory dwelling, dwelling structures. The closer they get to the property line, the, the more we need to introduce roof pitches that keep that, um, minimize the mass of having this structure adjacent to a neighboring property. And I think you achieve that by in, introducing and having an appropriate daylight plane dimension. Again, I, I think it's really intended, especially here for Los Altos, to prevent a sixteen foot tall box from being constructed right next to a, or within four feet of a property line. You can still have a, a sixteen foot tall ADU, the peak or that, that height, however, just has to be pushed back an appropriate distance from the property line. So that's, that's how I look at the daylight plane requirement.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, John.
Sure.
Um, so, and then my, yeah, sure, Phoebe.
Quick comment. What this means, if this was the Palo Alto daylight plane graphic and we applied it to us, then you could have a twelve foot, uh, four feet from the property line. And I'm, as a statement of fact, not to be discussed until we get into our discussion, that's twice the height of a property line fence.
Yes.
Four feet from the property.
Right.
Okay. Here, here, here. And then, um, the, the other question I had was, um, regarding the streamlined approval process. Uh, I wasn't sure if I maybe incorrectly read it. So, um, up to eight hundred square feet, um, with the setbacks and, and the correct height, um, that would go directly to the building, or that can go directly through building and doesn't need extra hearings, but anything above that would need extra, um, kind of hearings or process?
Uh, yeah, so, you're allowed by right by state law, the eight fifty. Um, if you want more than that, then, uh, definitely planning will get roped in. I don't know if John and I have fully, uh, worked out the kinks of that new process, and your, your lot would have to have the appropriate amount of footage, but by law you're allowed that eight fifty, by right.
Would the state, uh, because I know some cities have done this, would the state allow, um, any size to go straight through to building, but maybe have a, a pre-submital meeting with planning, but not go through a planning submittal?
Yeah, and, and we, I've noticed, uh, in Los Altos, that that's kind of a common practice already. Oftentimes, uh, the planners will do just a very perfunctory review, uh, for, say, something that's less than five hundred square feet, and then it'll go through, and that really is kind of a, more of a, less a, a law issue, more of a, hey, what can we do to help the customers? We don't want somebody to file for a building permit, and then thirty days later, oh, hey, you don't even meet the minimum requirement. So, yeah, absolutely, we will continue to be doing those kind of entry level type of reviews.
Okay. Um, okay, those are all my questions. Um, anyone else?
I have one last question, general one. Design review, it appeared to me when I was reading the state standing, that the concept of design review for an accessory building was not permitted, was not allowed by the state. There was no, you couldn't say, you need all these other requirements, the numbers, the setbacks, the, even a daylight plane, which I have some doubts about, but you couldn't say, I don't like your windows, I don't like your material, and yet I see there's a whole section here on design standards. How does that, how does that guide with the state?
Design standards? Where is, no, I mean, it's supposed to be a ministerial permit at this point, unless I, maybe I did take something. Do you want to cite the section of the ordinance that you're, which, are you? Yeah, I mean, I was responding to Commissioner Ahi, that, yes, I mean, from this point forward, the ADUs, you know, it's supposed to be a ministerial permit, but if you go above the eight hundred square feet, that's not a by right, um, use, and planning would absolutely want to at least do a general review. I don't know if we would call it a full-scale design review, but the, I mean, the goal of the state is to streamline these, and we are trying to work towards that goal.
It's in fourteen, fourteen, oh, fifty, where we're saying there's a streamlined approval, eight hundred square feet. If you go to J and, J one and, J one, architect, architectural view of attached or detached single-family residential accessory dwellings will be limited to architectural, there's window styles, roof cloths, exterior materials, that doesn't feel ministerial to me.
Okay. Okay. No, that's a good point.
Eight hundred and fifty square feet, yes, we're saying above eight hundred square feet. Because further down there, it says eight hundred square feet is the streamlined approval. So I don't see how design standards and architectural features fit in there at all. I mean, I don't know if you understand, but I don't see how they're compliant.
Okay. And then there's that pervasive eight hundred square feet that you use throughout, which really should be eight fifty until, unless you're talking. Right. Uh, I mean, we can certainly add language to J that says, you know, the design standard shall be for those that are over eight hundred and fifty, if that's the will of the commission. I'm not sure if John wanted to chime in in terms of the process.
Uh, not quite yet, no.
Yeah, I, I definitely think, um, Commissioner Bresik, I think, makes a really good point. And I think that, obviously, I don't know what staff will be able to do in terms of, uh, is it an over-the-counter meeting, which I think some cities have done, or is it something a little bit more serious than, than just over the counter? But something in there that says what type of design review would take place if it's over. I think a sentence might be helpful because I think, yeah, I think it does read as something more intense.
Okay.
Of a designer, yeah.
That's a fair decision.
Well, plus, uh, I'm sorry, but isn't that confusing? I can't see the top of it on what you're showing us. But, um, you know, twelve hundred square foot is an allowable ministerially if you have two bedrooms. So twelve hundred is over eight fifty unless you're specifically just referring to the eight fifties here, which I can't see from the page we're on. But, um, so I, I think there's some, because twelve hundreds are potentially, are generally ministerial approval as well, I would think.
Okay, good point.
Yep. Sorry. Yeah, I think the, the idea was, was just to, and maybe staff has a different, I think the idea is if it's something very small, like three hundred or four hundred, or maybe even smaller, then it could be something so easily kind of submitted to building. But once it gets to twelve hundred, I think staff would, would want to take a look and see, make sure that everything is kind of in place design-wise. So I think is that the i- idea?
That, that's, that's the general concept.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Um.
But isn't there a, uh, isn't there a size limit for a detached unit? Minimum limit, minimum size?
A minimum size? There is, uh, Jolie could quote.
Minimum granted is either eight hundred or eight fifty, depending which state you listen to.
That's right. So that's, that's a, that's a fairly sizable unit. Yeah, yeah. So I think that, that, that constitutes probably a, a design review, right? It makes sense. Yeah.
Except, I don't believe the state allows design review if it's ministerial. But I think we're into discussion. I think we should.
Sure.
Off and see what happens when we get to the next part.
Okay. Um, okay, so if, if those are all the questions, I'll open it up to public comment. I think we had a few people.
Yeah. Me, uh. Mute all. Okay, so I've unmuted everybody. So, who, who, um.
Uh, I guess we can start with, uh, Dan Norden.
Yes, hi, can you all hear me?
Yeah, go for it.
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. Um, interesting topic. My, my question was on, uh, this was fourteen fourteen zero eight zero, um, page six in attachment A regarding the daylight plane, uh, for detached accessory dwelling units. Um, and on number three there, bottom of the page, the, the, the daylight plane shall not, uh, well, actually, number two, it talks about the, um, uh, basically, the point of my question is can, can we consider public utility easements in some way, or we're talking about the daylight plane in a way maybe similar to city streets or alleyways or something like that? Or is that covered elsewhere? Maybe I didn't see.
Um, I don't know, Guido, if you want to, if you have a response for that?
I, I, do you want to maybe just elaborate a little bit more on your question or, or what you're?
Yeah, well, in, in certain. No, I'm just wondering if, if the, uh, or maybe, maybe the answer is not at all, but I'm wondering if public utility easements um, affect the daylight plane at all with regard to detached ADUs?
Public utility easement. Uh.
Overhead, overhead, overhead power lines that are maybe parallel to the rear property line, for example. And, uh, obviously, we have to keep the footprint of the structure away, but can we have, is there more flexibility vertically? Um, because of the, the fact they can't use that portion of the property? I'm asking sort of on behalf of a client that we're talking to who are in, you know, these are the types of questions I'm asked as a builder, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would say we would have to work with you on a individual level, but the overall, the overall gist of the, the state laws is to allow the eight hundred and fifty square foot unit, and if there's something that prohibits that, then we would have to work with you to hopefully accomplish that goal. But again, some of that might be a little bit more site-specific than, uh, putting in a general ordinance that applies to all the cities. So I, I'd be certainly glad to talk to you offline or.
But actually, power lines are never included in a daylight plane.
No.
Power lines are included.
Yeah.
So if you have a power line on a public utility easement in the back, the power line is not breaking the daylight plane. It's the structure that's being controlled by the daylight plane.
And, and the other thing.
I thought.
The other thing to be mindful of is that the easement itself may have some limitations on what would be allowed to be placed within the easement.
Right, right, sure, sure, that makes sense. Okay. Side, side by, what I'm hearing is it more or less has, has been kind of going to be dealt with on a project-by-project, side-by-side basis?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Um, next up, uh, Gary Haddon.
Hello, uh, this is Gary Haddon, Los Altos resident. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks. It's a little hard to know for sure when you're just talking to a phone. Sure. Uh, first of all, thank you for doing your part to bring Los Altos into compliance with the new state laws affecting ADUs. My concern is the daylight plane requirement. If you make it too strict, such as the five-to-twelve slope, it will make the ADU very shallow. Better to go one-to-one. This will still protect us from the, as John puts it, the unlikely sixteen-foot wall located five feet from the property line. Uh, furthermore, my suggestion is to look back at the past fifty or maybe a hundred approved ADUs, test any daylight plane proposals under consideration by this commission, and make sure that the proposal doesn't reject plans that were previously approved. It shouldn't reject any. If it does, then the proposal is too strict and you have created a barrier. Such a barrier compromises the appearance and functionality of otherwise fine plans. Please don't do that. And so, uh, there's a little bit of work involved in doing this to get, to gather this information. You'd have to pull out the last fifty to a hundred plan. And then, uh, put, put an overlay on it with the, the setback requirements that you're talking about, the daylight plane requirement. And just take a look, see if the ADU fits or if it doesn't fit. And, uh, if Guido needs to pop on that, I'm, uh, happy to volunteer to give him a hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Um, next up, uh, Greg Popovich.
Hello, my name's Greg Popovich and I'm with Gold Park Builders. We're both builders and advocates of ADUs and the positive impacts ADUs have on our communities to house our teachers, city staff, grocery workers, police, senior citizens, adult children, restaurant workers, caregivers, and a multitude of others that work and serve in our community, but yet cannot afford to live anywhere close to where they work. The people who live in our ADUs contribute to the services that keep our communities running smoothly and ensure our education, health, and well-being. Without housing for these types of workers, we are in jeopardy of losing these highly valuable individuals and in turn lowering the high standards that maintain our property values and way of life. I understand the need to protect the aesthetics and environment that has been created in Los Altos and I'm highly concerned that there is a daylight plane in the proposed ordinance that negates the state mandated guidelines. With that being said, the constraints of including the proposed daylight plane will limit the ability of some of the properties, properties in Los Altos to even build an ADU. Under the proposed plane, if the owner needs to build up to the state mandated four-foot setback, the roof pitch will be similar to that of a mobile home. Aesthetically, the proposed plane will encourage subpar design in contrast to that of the beautiful homes in Los Altos. The proposed daylight plane will only allow a seven-to-seven-half-foot ceiling height and a very minor roof slope, which is inconsistent with the Los Altos architecture. It also creates an effect of living in a small cluster public box, which would not be acceptable, acceptable to most people. The proposed ADU ordinance diagram depicts a slab-on-grade foundation, which is much lower than a raised-floor foundation, which most of your homes currently rest on. A well-designed ADU should have a minimum of nine-foot interior ceiling height to give the impression of spaciousness and a comfortable living environment. From a design perspective and in the spirit of SB thirteen, AB sixty-eight, AB eight eighty-one, in addition to the aesthetics of the community, I implore you to either eliminate the daylight plane or to propose a daylight plane similar to the one that I sent to the planning commission on four fourteen twenty twenty. That plane is not my own, but from a Los Altos resident who obtained it from a neighboring community that was considering the same issue. That example will allow architecture that is both appealing and functional and will not obstruct the community's ability to build an ADU. Part of my concern is that I'm building an ADU currently and we were doing it under the old daylight plane of Los Altos, which had a incredible impact on design, which made it look terrible. Once the new laws came into effect, we resubmitted and the new ADU is now a beautiful piece. Please reconsider the daylight plane that you're proposing so that we don't have to sit there and to, to run across the same issues again. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Greg. Um, and then I, I don't know, there's no one else labeled, but if there's anyone else, um, from public comment, please feel free to speak now.
Uh, this is Alok Sinder.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, may I speak up? Okay, great. Um, uh, thank you to the commission. Um, I really appreciate everyone putting this time, especially in, um, in a, the COVID pandemic. Uh, I'm, uh, my name's Alok Sinder. I am a, uh, Los Altos resident and homeowner. Um, and, uh, you know, admittedly, I'm interested in building an ADU in my backyard, you know, live in, uh, kind of a very typical Los Altos home, one-story ranch home, twenty-three hundred square feet. And so this is something that, you know, I'd view as valuable, it could be something that could be affordable housing, as Greg said. Uh, there's a lot of people who are key to this city who don't, who have extremely long commutes and, uh, creating affordable housing, I think, is really important for our area. Um, frankly, I think it would be good for property value long-term and things like that, um, as a, as, as a homeowner. Um, I think I also wanted to comment briefly on the daylight plane as well, because it is something, if we build something, it'd be nice for whomever is there, whether it's, uh, an in-law unit for, uh, family or if it's, uh, a rental for someone who works in the city. Uh, you know, it'd be nice if there was a nine-foot ceiling, uh, which feels like a more appropriate height for, uh, typical Los Altos homes these days. Uh, as well as, uh, you know, the raised floor, and I think even insulation, I wanted to add that, is that I, you know, typically, you want to have the climate and then the sound and everything related to that. And so I think the roof also typically, it's twelve inches from that area too. So, you know, whenever I, when I saw the daylight plane, I too was focused on, you know, this is a great opportunity for the city. Uh, and there's probably a really good way to do it in a daylight plane. Uh, I'm in support of it because you don't want that tall sixteen-foot wall. But something like Palo Alto, which, uh, pushes it out through a slope, I think I heard one-to-one or twelve, uh, a forty-five-degree angle, that seems appropriate and that also allows for a unit that I think people will want to live in. And frankly, would probably enhance property values in the long-term versus something that looks and feels like a shed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alok. Um, and then I think that was all the public comment. Uh, if there's anyone else, please feel free to say something. Um, and then Jolie, I think you have your hand raised. If you, did you have something to say?
We can't hear you.
Okay, I'm, I'm muted now. Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure because, um, we had people calling in and I wanted to make sure that you, um, before you close the public hearing, you reach out again to see if there are people out there or if there's, um, just to make sure that we get the comments from the, um, public.
Sure.
We should probably ask again before we close the public hearing. And, and after you do your discussion, I would ask again, just to reach out and make sure we get everybody.
Okay, no problem. Um, so before I close, uh, is there anyone that, from the public, that wants to make a public comment? Okay, I don't see anyone on the participants. So, uh, I will close public comment and then I will open up, uh, discussion. Um, I don't know who, uh, wants to go first. Um, but whoever wants to go, go for it. Anyone? Uh, I'll just, I'll, Phoebe, since you're first, on my screen.
Well, Alok, there's Duha, all right.
I want Zach, I think.
I guess the question is for us, I'll ask you, there was, should we, do you want to go through the ordinance section by section or should we focus our discussion on what appears to be? It seems to me there are two big issues. One is literally, is eight hundred or eight fifty a tipping point? We can, as an ordinance, pick one and then if the state says, oops, we made a mistake, that can be modified, I think, relatively easily. But the discussion about the daylight plane, I think, is one that's more philosophical. Are you all?
Sure.
So we do that as issues and then we can go through the line by line because there is some words missing that we should probably go through.
Sure, yeah, I think, that's a, that's a really good idea. I think maybe we can start off with just the size discussion. Um, and then kind of go around and then see, and then we can move on to daylight plane and then we can move on to anything else, uh, like details. Um, so, yeah, so I think size would be a good spot to start.
So I think it's a brilliant idea to have a table where it would be very clear for someone looking in to say, look, you are allowed to have a twelve-hundred-and-fifty square foot two-bedroom unit with the following conditions when they're met. If you want to have that, you must meet these conditions. But in no case would you be forbidden from doing a smaller unit, eight hundred or eight fifty, we can decide which one, as a one-bedroom unit, because that's the essence of it. And I think the thing that's not only the goal to be compliant with state regs, but the other thing is I think that one of our public speakers pointed out, it's not only the compliance which we are mandated to do, but also as planning commission to help fulfill the reason why people move to a suburban community, which is to maintain the privacy between our larger-than-Palo Alto lots, larger-than-Mountain View lots generally, to maintain the sense that even if there are three units, potentially, a main house, a JD, JADU, and a detached accessory structure, it'll still have enough grace between properties that people won't feel like they're living in each other's pockets. And I know that some of the garage conversions, since garages were built under a different detached accessory structure formula, are much closer in some cases. And so those will require some special sensitivity, but we have to allow them. So I think that, from my perspective, I think that eight hundred is a number which is mentioned three times in the state law and eight fifty is only mentioned once. So I think it might be prudent for us to use eight as the absolute code. We can't prevent you from doing this. It's an entitlement for a one-bedroom unit. And then twelve fifty, I think, is, uh, an entitlement if you meet the other criteria relative to. relative to whatever else the material are. That's it for me on that.
Okay. Um, Sally, did you want to go next, uh, about the size issue?
Um, let's see, I think it was twelve-hundred that it said, uh, I saw Jolie was nodding, but you, you have to unmute yourself so you can, uh, do verbally. Anyway, um, so I, um, I'm fine with the eight-hundred, I think we should, it's easier to pick one number and be clear about it, but again, it really depends where, what the state's intention was, uh, with that, so, um, but it does get very confusing if you have this, uh, two numbers that are so close. Um, so I can support, you know, sticking with the eight-hundred and the twelve-hundred with the caveat that, I don't know, Guido, if you, you pulled up the state law, so were you able to answer the question that that's because that the eight-hundred and the twelve-hundred or the eight-fifty and the twelve-hundreds are, are just how it's, uh, said in the state law?
Uh, I pulled it up, but just haven't had a chance to get to that section yet on the, yeah.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Merrick, did you want to make a comment about the size, um, issue?
I mean, my comment is that I, I agree with, um, some of the comments that were made by, um, uh, some of the people who spoke and I, I do share the concern that the way it's set up, the, I, I, again, it's hard for me because I don't know if it's a question of the size or, uh, something else, but it, it doesn't feel realistic that the units are going to be, um, particularly comfortable to live in or, or also possibly, you know, the, the aesthetic concerns that were raised. But I do wonder if, you know, I don't know if, I am not probably well-versed enough to know how to address that, but I, I do share the concern that the way, when I read it, it shows like these are going to be very small and, and low. Um, and that does, to me, present a problem that they might not serve in a function that they're supposed to be, be serving, which is to be, uh, you know, separate units to, to house people at more affordable rates.
Okay. Um, and then Commissioner Lee, um, if you wanted to make a comment?
Sure. Um, yeah, I think, again, uh, sort of an area, area calculation, uh, and, you know, and a quick means for a homeowner to establish, uh, what their, um, buildable area is would be, would be great. And in terms of the areas that we're talking about, um, I think between eight-hundred and eight-hundred-and-fifty, I don't, to me, not a, not a very big material, material difference. Uh, I've been reading eight-hundred square feet, so I'm, I'm fine with that. If the state chooses eight-fifty, fine with that as well. Um, and I think twelve-hundred is also an appropriate number for, uh, an ADU with, uh, multiple bedrooms. So I'm, I'm sort of, I'm fine with, uh, what's being proposed, uh, in the, uh, the ordinance here.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I'll just say that I think that eight-hundred probably makes more sense just because that's the number that I've been seeing, um, throughout. Um, so I think, obviously, I think as, as much as we're close to, um, the state regulation, I think that's probably the way to go. So, uh, we can just wait and see what happens, but for now, um, we can go with that. Um, so, yeah, I'll move on to the daylight plane, um, issue if we want to chunk that out and talk about that for a second. Um, so Phoebe, if you want to maybe start off your comment?
I am in the unusual position of having designed the same unit under the old daylight plane and under the new daylight plane. It is to say, um, I had a situation where the detached accessory structure could be pulled back sufficiently to fit in whatever the daylight plane was going to be. But I understand and well, well aware that most lots may not have that freedom, which is unusual for our lot. I can support the Palo Alto daylight plane for the reason that, again, one of our public speakers was talking about, which was I did the math and you can do a raised floor, a concrete showing, and then you have to hang the floor joits, but that is not an uncommon detail in a high-grade situation, and have a nine-foot plate and then have twelve inches or ten inches of roof structure and still come out under this daylight plane. And I agree with the speaker who said that if you have to hold it down artificially, you get these push-looking units that don't reflect the aesthetic quality that we hope to see when we have design review and when we're allowed to do it. So I can support this one. Um, I do want to point out again that this will be for some residents, um, if someone was, if an applicant was going to do what I would call bad behavior, you could actually have a fairly tall wall, twelve feet tall, or either way from the property line. And that's been suggested in conversations with, I thought that...
What do you, what do you want me to do? I saw.
People should mute. I can't hear Phoebe because there's background noise. If, if everyone else can mute, please.
I mean, I think that it would be useful for us to provide incentives to identify the goals that would best reflect the value architecturally for building in our town. And if what we want to do is encourage people to stay further away from the property line, if we want to encourage people to, um, stay lower in some way, um, mostly pull away from the property line, the daylight plane is one tool, but we could also incentivize it because what we didn't talk about at all is that if the ADU is seven-hundred-and-fifty, less than seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, then the normal development fees and utility fees are not applied. And that is a significant amount of money. I believe it's in four digits, might be in five, um, at some point when staff can get into City Hall, they'll find out what that is, but I think it's a real number. And so one possibility is we could, in addition to this, have a section that says, if you stay X feet from the property line, eight feet, ten feet, whatever, we will allow your absolute guaranteed minimum for a one-bedroom or studio unit to go to eight-fifty or go to nine-hundred. Because if it's pulled back further, that's an advantage that I think we could offer as an incentive. Um, in my opinion, incentives work when there's a real value and getting a larger building pulled away and maybe even extending, instead of saying seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet is exempt from, um, development impact fees, maybe we say, if you pull back ten feet from the property line, you can have your eight-foot guaranteed minimum, I mean, your eight-hundred square foot guaranteed minimum without development impact fee. And that would be something where by providing a carrot, we can maybe achieve a goal that's important in terms of maintaining privacy between properties. So with that said, I can support the Palo Alto one, but I think we should have another layer.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Phoebe. Um, Sally, did you want to go next? Oh, you're muted.
Okay, yes, you're right. Um, so I was looking for the part, um, because I think what Phoebe said makes sense because the notes I had to myself say, uh, so if you look at the way it was phrased in the draft, so it's to reduce the privacy impact to the neighbor, um, there was sort of these, well, not necessarily arbitrary numbers, but if an applicant voluntarily increases the setback to be ten feet, um, for the rear yard, eight feet from the interior side yard, um, you know, the building division will expedite the plan check review. So, uh, that, that just was, it felt a little random thrown in there because, I mean, why, uh, you know, ten feet and eight feet? So I think Phoebe's approach would make a lot more sense, uh, particularly if there's some way to, um, particularly have a, a graduated scale. I'm sorry, I was not following Phoebe as closely as I should have because I was looking for the wording that, that I objected to, but I, I do agree with, uh, what she was saying. But I think the, the Palo Alto daylight plane makes a lot more sense and then if we can then send them to, um, you know, potentially move things, then they're actually, it's not just potentially a fee win, but a win that they've got, um, you know, the daylight plane, they've got more room to work with if they move further in any way. So, um, I think it's a good approach.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Merrick, did you want to go next? Um, Commissioner Merrick, are you there? Okay, I guess we'll move on to Commissioner Lee. If you had a comment, sure.
Sure. Um, regarding the, uh, the daylight, uh, plane, which seems to be the, uh, the item that, um, everyone is, uh, is talking about, um, I, I do feel that the, the current one that's proposed in the ordinance is, will not yield a favorable, um, uh, situation inside, uh, the unit. I think, um, you know, clearly shown on the diagram, seven foot six minimum ceiling height, achieving that is, um, it's a fairly low, um, seat, floor ceiling, high for a, what would be a fairly small, uh, dwelling unit. So I think, uh, I think there's something at, at odds here. Um, you know, uh, we are sensitive to, to our environment and making sure that, uh, the, the units are well proportioned to the, to the main house and to the adjacencies with the neighbors. However, I think, uh, we need to provide the homeowners with, um, you know, a, a unit that, uh, feels, feels good and, and feels like it would be a proper, uh, dwelling unit. So I, I would, I would definitely champion, um, the additional, uh, proposed height to, um, I guess this, the, uh, the one that's been sent around as a diagram. Um, however, having said that, I think the increase in height from seven to eight, um, is, is a positive thing and I would definitely support that. Uh, I think the slope, uh, however, the one-to-one, I would potentially, I, I, you know, I may question that, whether or not, um, because, you know, provide, allowing that, uh, allowing that slope will, will incentivize, I think, uh, the builders and the homeowners to sort of maximize that, right? And I'm not sure if that's really that slope, that aggressive of a slope is necessarily in keeping with, uh, the character of the homes here in Los Altos. I, I think that's, that's more of a personal observation. Um, but, I mean, hopefully, within that plane, you can sort of sculpt the, the right, um, massing, uh, that's appropriate. But chances are, if, given the, given the allowance, you will, you know, most homeowners will probably, um, decide to maximize and therefore create certain geometries, so, which, um, we'll see. I mean, it'll certainly add additional, uh, height to the overall unit and, uh, it may or may not be in keeping with some of the character, uh, characteristics of, of the, the residential neighborhood here in Los Altos. So I question that. And, uh, I do, I think the overall height, uh, I, I would, I would definitely, um, promote increasing, but the actual slope of this, of the roof is something that I would question.
Do you have an alternative proposal, Duho?
Well, you know, I, you know, let's say six, six and twelve to, to kind of have it. Um, it's close to five and twelve, that's shown in the, uh, in the diagram that's in the ordinance now or in the proposed ordinance. Um, you know, again, that gives you ample room, I think, to, to sort of play around with the pitches of the roof. Um, I'm, I'm more concerned about the floor ceiling height inside and I think if we can rectify that, um, I'd rather keep it, keep the overall height a little bit lower or, or have provisions to keep that a little bit lower. So I'm kind of torn at the moment.
So the reason I ask that is because in my experience, predominant roof slope in Los Altos on ranch-style houses is four and a half and twelve.
Yes.
So three and twelve is just barely enough to have water roll off and you don't have to keep the roof up.
Yes.
So that's clearly at one end of the spectrum.
Yep.
And one and, one-to-one is clearly the other end of the spectrum and...
That's correct.
Standard for Palo, uh, for Los Altos ranch-style is four and a half and twelve.
Right. So I'm thinking if five and twelve, it's, yeah, I mean, that feels, to me, it feels good. Uh, six and twelve, I, I think, we feel okay, but I think, I think twelve, you know, one, one, one-to-one feels a little extreme for what I've seen, what I've noticed in the, in the, in the environment.
Okay. And so, sorry, before I move forward, I think there are two public comments that didn't, um, get in the, the first time around. So Jolie, should I let them in now before we kind of go further?
We make sure we, yeah, make sure we receive everybody's comments and then do a last call for comments again, so we make sure...
Oh, so do it now?
Yeah, I, I would, I would bring them in now.
Okay.
Consider their information when you deliberate.
Okay, so, um, Chris Kohlstad, um, if someone would want to unmute him, um... Yeah, Chris, I think...
You are muted?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I believe, and, and could you maybe unmute Walter Chapman?
Uh, oh, yes, sorry.
You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Color commentary if possible. We, we both have the same comments, so.
Oh, okay, no problem. You want to go for it?
Yeah, well, what we've been struggling with and is the application of the square footage to an existing residence. Um, there, I wrote a, a letter in and basically, what the ordinance is allowing is an extra eight-hundred square feet above and beyond your floor area rule for a detached structure. It is allowing eight-hundred square feet for an attached structure. And what we're running into with existing homes is, in Chris Kohlstad's case, there's no desire to put an eight-hundred-square-foot building in the backyard. It would dominate the backyard, it'd be greater impact on the neighbors. And what we were looking at as well, if we could integrate with, into the existing house with some addition, but what we're trying to do is the ordinance, the way it's drafted, allows a separate building or an attached building, but not an area of structure that is within or part of a primary residence. And this is my point, if you have an existing house and you're maxed out on square footage, if you're able to remodel a portion of the existing house to accommodate ADU that's integrated with your home, then you don't end up with buildings in the backyard, which are creating more impact on your neighbors. What you end up with is a larger primary residence by upwards of eight-hundred square feet, but if you were building a new home, you'd be allowed to do that. So we run into this situation, when Chris Kohlstad's a perfect example, I have others I'm working with, where we can do a better design by doing an integrated eight-hundred-square-foot ADU, but we need the freedom then to modify part of the existing house to meld them together. And what this would do, that flexibility, would allow more people to integrate their ADUs rather than building them in the backyard, keeps open space for the community, less impact on neighbors, but accomplishes the state's goal of getting ADUs and also the eight-hundred net square foot gain is melded into a house and disappears instead of appearing in your yard. And there doesn't seem to be an accommodation for that in the way the ordinance is written, even though it meets the intent, I believe, of what the state's trying to accomplish.
And let me, let me, uh, just say, in other words, basically, what we're looking for is a JADU to be treated in the same way as coverage of a ADU, right? So, you know, whereas an ADU, you, the eight-hundred square feet of coverage is X budget beyond your, you know, thirty percent coverage if it's a two-story or, uh, thirty-five percent coverage if it's a single-story, um, that is not counted against that, it's plus, right? Whereas if it's contained within the house, it seems that you're actually being penalized by having to keep it within the thirty-five percent, uh, coverage because there's no accommodation... within the thirty-five percent, uh, coverage because there's no accommodation, uh, for the, you know, for that JADU allowance, right? Um, so that, that's all we're trying to get a clarification on. It, it seems to make total sense, uh, that a JADU should be, you know, considered in the same way an ADU is. Um, but it seems like the interpretation currently is not that.
Okay. Um, thank you so much for your comment. Uh, I think our, uh, city attorney had a comment for that. Jolie, did you want to go?
Yes. Um, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my understanding is it's written right now that you cannot expand your house to provide for an AD, JADU within the four walls of the building. Um, and that seems counterintuitive, but that is the way the law is. I've had this come up in another jurisdiction. Um, someone could go and expand their house, seven hundred or eight hundred square feet, come back and then convert it into a JADU and that would be okay. But right now, the way the statutes are written and our proposed ordinance is based on those statutes. And I'll let Guido or John, um, chime in on that. But that is my understanding is, yes, you can get eight fifty, which is the minimum, you know, the, 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 can't be less than eight fifty or a thousand square feet. The eight hundred comes up is when you're basing it on, um, the percentage of the, um, main structure. So there are two numbers, eight hundred and eight fifty. I believe the state is going to say, we need to have the, um, the eight fifty. I, we'll be able to do a thousand, I believe, because, um, there is a, not to exceed twelve hundred square feet, but then it has, it cannot be less than a thousand. But
This is a different question, actually.
I know, I, I, I know. And what you want to do is you want to have a, a larger ADU and that is in, inside a home and that's not allowed under the current state law.
No, not a larger one. We want smaller ones.
Yeah, we would like five hundred.
Well, but we have a minimum of eight, uh, JADUs.
Of five hundred. Of five, five hundred?
Yes. And you would like it to be bigger than five hundred. No, you want to, you want, oh, you, you want to expand your, you want to expand your house to allow it.
So, well, I mean, to take a step back.
More than the hundred, hundred.
If, if I was building, or, sorry, go ahead.
You get a hundred and fifty square feet for access, but you can't, and I can let Guido go through this as well. But you can't, can't expand your house for a JADU. That is my understanding of the current law.
So Walt, Walter and I spoke at length today. Um, I very much value his input because he's been in the community forty years. He is trying to put a rational process, uh, upon six state bills that got adopted in Sacramento, uh, that we're all struggling to implement. Um, you know, sometimes the way those bills are written are not entirely clear, as evident by today. But mixing and matching the square footages with the JADU and all that, expanding the house and then, and then try, that's, we, we've already spoken, I've already spoken to Walter about that. Um, I understand what the property owner is trying to do, but we're really confined by the state law as we're interpreting them. Uh, the JADU should be within the confines of the existing house. And as Jolie mentioned, uh, the other game people are going to play next is add on to the house, get it finalized by the city, and then go back and add a kitchen to make it a JADU. There's nothing preventing people from doing that. But if you want a JADU, we can help you with that. If you want an attached ADU, we can help you with that. That's where we are as of today.
All right.
And I, and, and I would also add that the state has looked at this ordinance and they have, you know, in general, my conversation with them this afternoon, um, they were generally supportive of this ordinance. So I, I would be a little uncomfortable. Uh, the edits the commissioner made are very appropriate, but, um, you know, we're going to try to stick to the state laws. We're seeing them.
All right. Could, is, is Phoebe still available?
Yeah, I'm here.
Phoebe, um, being a designer and an architect, talking same lingo, um, the net result when you're done, because the way the ordinance is written, if you're building a new house, you can do exactly what I just said. You can have a house that meets all of the current zoning rules of Los Altos and melded with that, you can have an ADU. And it says you can do that if you're building a new house. What we're dealing with is a case of a remodel or addition. The net result when you're done is exactly the same thing as if you're building a new house with an ADU incorporated with it. It's just that the way it's written, it doesn't allow that with a remodel. And
What I was wondering is, in fact, what you're talking about is an attached ADU.
Mm-hmm.
Some of which is existing space and some of which would be an addition. And the addition would only be allowed because there's a minimum mandate for a size of an attached ADU. I'm not even going to go to a JADU because that's got many other bells and whistles. Is that what you're saying?
Well, what, what
Only be allowed because you would be, you, otherwise it would ministerially be preventing you from the eight hundred that you're supposed to be granted.
That's, that's partial of it. But visualize if, when you're doing, to optimize a preferred architectural design to a house, just attaching an addendum onto the house doesn't always work well. Where, but if you can take that addendum and integrate it into the architecture of the house, but give the freedom to pop out somewhere else the equivalent of space, so you still get your eight hundred. So then you can balance that same eight hundred square feet to the best architectural style and improvement of the home, rather than just sticking something that can be butt ugly onto a house because that's all the rule allows you to do. Then that result is the same.
I think, I understand what you're saying, but Jolie is correct. I was dealing with this in Palo Alto. At the time I was doing this particular project, the planner said to me, if you don't add space to the main house now, under the umbrella of what you're allowed to add by zoning, once you add the accessory dwelling unit, you will be over and you will lose forever the right to make that an addition. That's coming out of the other way. But in fact, Walter, I, I don't see there's a way that we can structure the ordinance because the state didn't think about, um, balancing if you steal from one, you should be able to get credit for it the other. There's no mechanism for that.
I, I understand. The state didn't think this out very well, but you understand architecturally, that's, the end result is the same end result. It's just you end up with a better product.
Well, I mean, the question is, Jolie, sometimes when we go through our ordinances in a revision, you say to us, the state has required this, but they will allow you to go further as long as you don't vitiate their command. Is this a situation where we have that option?
I, I would say no, um, because the, the way the new, um, JADU and the, and the, because we're all trying to harmonize the several bills that came out. And it's pretty, it is clear that, you know, the JADU needs to be within the confines. There are clear requirements for attached and detached. It may be something that is in a cleanup bill, but, you know, when you look at these bills and you look at some of the other housing bills, um, clearly they were not drafted by architects or planners because we're all, I mean, we have several different housing bills and we're still trying to figure out two-thirds of the square footage of the project. What does that really mean? Because they all have different definitions. But right, you know, Walter, we could change our ordinance and try to include this, but it's going to get kicked back from the, it will get kicked back from the state. So.
The sad part of it is the net result ironically is the same, but you can get better architecture and better community by doing it. Because it's a great way that, because it would encourage people to remodel their main house instead of putting buildings in their backyard. That's all.
Yeah, I, I understand. Instead of just, you know, putting another clump on the cake, it would be the whole cake. You know, I'm trying to talk architect talk, but I'm not an architect. But you would want a, a full cake, everything that looks really nice and not this nice cake with this clunk on the side. Um,
Perfectly.
I've been watching a lot of, uh, cooking shows, uh, in Shutter Place. So I, all the bake-offs, I've been watching them build these things. But
You understand.
I, I, I really understand where you're coming from and, and I'm sure the planning commissioners, probably the council, would like to facilitate this. But I don't see the state, I, I see the state coming back and striking it. And, um, there might, you know, and this isn't something that we can say is a health and safety, some sort of local concern that we need to, um, be a little bit different from the state. So. And then the other thing I wanted to chime in on, if people, I'll, I'll chime in later, but I understand what you two are saying, but I just don't see it under the law as written. So I'm saying it's just, oh, it's a shame to have an ordinance passed that's going
to end up in some bad results for the community without at least making the effort was my point. Because it's not going to be pretty when you start seeing these things get built.
Well, I have to say, Walter, but I have faith that you'll be able to make it look good no matter what you do.
Or we just won't do them.
And the alternative is you could wait. Uh, this is not
I
You could wait and see if the law gets changed.
Yes. Yeah, there's probably going to be another like ten, eighty, you're probably going to be back here in six months changing this thing anyways, Walter. So.
I, I would gladly be able to give, give my input, uh, if there's room to do so to help guide the state, if you have connections, Guido.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, I, I need to remind the commission that you, you, um, you interrupted the deliberations of the commission to allow for public comment, not to, not to debate with the public.
So what, uh, everyone had said, I think I'd be hesitant to add, uh, something to the ordinance now. Um, but you never know, maybe by the time it goes to city council, things might change. Um, so yeah. Um, okay. So I think we'll just, uh, I don't think there's anyone else, but if there's any other public comment, um, please, um, feel free to say something. Um, okay. So I, I'll just, uh, wrap up the daylight plane, um, topic. I think that when I first, um, saw it, I thought that it, like Phoebe had mentioned, I think it was the perfect incentive item, um, to have. Uh, so I thought that it could have just been an incentive item. Um, I do think after looking at Palo Alto, I think the eight foot one to one, uh, I think makes a lot of sense. I think maybe there's a way where the eight foot one to one could be our, in our ordinance, but maybe, um, uh, seven foot one to one could be the incentive. Um, again, that's only a difference of eleven or twelve feet, eleven versus twelve. So I don't know if that does a difference. I, I do like, um, Commissioner Lee's suggestion of six to twelve. So I, I do think that having some type of incentive would be nice for the daylight plane. Um, but I, I don't know what that, that incentive would be. Um, and I don't want to propose something that staff may or may not be able to, to do. Um, so that was my comment on that. And then, but yeah, I think the eight foot one to one, that would be my preference. And then the, uh, fourteen dot fourteen dot zero eight oh for that incentive item with the eight feet and ten feet, I just thought it might make more sense to do ten and ten since the R one ten already has ten for the side setback. Uh, but again, that's, uh, maybe a minor thing. Um, but that was just something that, that caught my eye. Um, so, so yeah, those were, those were the two things I had for, uh, daylight plane. Um, okay. Yeah, I was, I, I was about to go see if, if, uh, Commissioner Merrick, are you there?
Let me see.
So do we only have, sorry, do we have three?
We have four.
No, let me check.
We have, we have four. Yeah, we have four right now. Um, yeah, Commissioner Merrick, I, he's, he's on here. He might just, uh, not have us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Mike, Commissioner Merrick.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still here.
Oh, okay. Uh, we were just wondering if you had any comments on the daylight plane, um, topic and a preference.
Nothing. I, I actually agree with what your, your comment that you just made. I have nothing related to that.
Okay, no problem. Um, okay, so that's, so that's
Commissioner, uh, so, so the way, so the Palo Alto language says, um, the daylight plane would start eight feet from the property line and increase at a one to one. But, but Commissioner Lee said he felt uncomfortable with the one to one. He recommended a five, twelve or six, twelve. Um, I don't know if I've gotten final direction from the commission about that. So I just want to ask to get that direction.
Um, my, my personal comment, uh, I think that one to one, I, I, I like one to one. I, I thought that maybe six to twelve could be an additional, uh, incentive. But if that's too confusing, then, uh, I'll just say my vote is one to one. But, um, I don't know if anyone else, uh, wants to comment on that.
That's the reverse because, um, one to one gives you more volume to play within. If you drop five and twelve, you have less volume.
Hmm.
It's, it's the actual, the advantage, it would be advantageous, a incentive if you said it's five and twelve, eight feet, starting at the property line. But if you pull back to ten feet, we'll give you one to one.
Oh, I see what you mean. And then would that, would that work in conjunction with the ten foot and eight foot side setbacks then? Because then they're going farther away, but then they could go higher.
Well, they can have an absolute height, but they can put more
Yeah, sorry.
shoulders than they
Okay. Yeah, I like that. Uh, yeah, I didn't think of it that way. Yeah.
So the consensus is one to one, but the incentive would come in if they moved five, twelve or six, twelve, is that, is that the consensus?
But which incentive are you offering them? I mean, because that, if they're already getting an expedited re- review, what are you going to do? Look at it for one week quicker? I mean, that's
Well, I think that, I, to Commissioner, uh, Phoebe's point, we're, we're trying to incentivize something. And, uh, her original request to me was to put it as fees, but, uh, Jolie, if she wants to unmute herself, that we might run into some, uh, prevailing wage issue, which is why the original suggestion got taken out. Um, so I was trying to come up with something. If there's another incentive the commission wants to add, we're, we're just trying to give people something to move towards to help reduce neighborhood issues. So.
Yeah, I just, um, I, I just thought that in terms of the one to one, if it goes in conjunction with the eight and ten, then they might feel more incentivized to build farther away, but they know that they could have a slightly higher, uh, roof line. So those two could actually be packaged together and you would get the expedited review. So they're, that way we don't have to kind of come up with a new incentive.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah. But again, I don't know if others feel the same way.
Jolie, could you, um, tell me what prevailing wage means relative to not being able to extend the, um, waiver of fees?
Okay. Uh, under prevailing wage law, and we're, uh, we're a general law city, so, um, uh, if, if you, one thing that you could do for prevailing wage, if there's, if there's any public or local aid into a private project, it can trigger prevailing wage. And public monies contributed to a private project includes reduction or waiver of fees. And so it would be something, if we're, if we're really going to do that, uh, when it was raised to me, I said, oh, it could, it could trigger prevailing wage. And so, um, that is an, uh, an issue that we would have to think about if you want to waive fees. Because you may waive the permit fees, but then it triggers prevailing wage. And so does that really help the applicant?
So the fact that the state has mandated that if it's seven hundred and fifty feet or less, can't like, way of mitigating that? They don't have to, that doesn't trigger it?
Well, that, that, those are impact fees. This is a different, so if you, you, we could still charge processing fees.
Well.
And, but if we waive those processing fees, it could trigger prevailing wage.
What if we only waive the developer impact fee or the utility fee?
That would still be a waiver of a, of a, of a fee.
Okay, and as long as the state mandates it, it doesn't trip that category?
No, because the, yeah, the state is saying you, you can't, you cannot charge, we could not charge any permit fees for any of these ADUs, and, um, and that would be a way around it, but we do wanna have permit fees because we want cost recovery for our processing. But once we waive them or reduce them, then that is public monies used in a project.
So a developer, developer impact fee, looking, there are three fees. There's the cost recovery, there's a process, there's a utility fee, and then there is a developer impact fee. Any of those, if we waive any of those, as a, a city, we're tripping into the public money going into private project. But when the state does it, that's not the same thing.
Yeah.
That was the thing that wasn't clear to me.
No, it, it's come up because, you know, people want to, um, uh, you know, reduce fees, parking fees, permit fees to help stimulate downtown, and it can, and it can trigger the projects becoming prevailing wage, so, um, it's...
I'm so glad you are a lawyer, Walter.
I know, people, uh, yes, so it's, uh, I can, um, if you, I can give you a whole PowerPoint on prevailing wage if you, if you want it, okay?
That we weren't going to make a mistake stupidly for lack of good advice. So the expedited review is, and it's, uh, similar, wanted to make a nice juicy carrot. We could incentivize pulling back by making it faster to get out and getting a different, um, a volumetric control that's more advantageous. That's our juicy carrot.
Yeah, I think that, you know, obviously it's, um, you know, we can make a recommendation and see kind of how city council feels about it, but that was kind of something that I thought, uh, maybe we could add something in addition. Um, I, I also just checked to see the, on, um, on my ki- kind of program. So, uh, eight feet at six to twelve would be that that edge would be at ten feet. So is that kind of, um, the consensus that that edge, it would be a good at, at ten feet? Is that kind of...
Well, when I, when I did the calculation, figuring that you could have eight inches of concrete and then a nine-foot plate height, that was not a good aid, it actually, ten foot, ten foot is a little tight for the roof structure, but you could do it if the spans are small.
Hmm. Okay.
Two inches at the property line, that allows you to get an inch, um, roof structure?
Yeah, 'cause I, I just didn't wanna, I, I don't, you know, I'm not sure what people are gonna wanna design and, and if they might be a little bit off of that ten foot, um, on that edge, so I, I just didn't know if maybe we should bump it up or not, but, um...
Well, look, if it's, if they can't make it by two inches, they can pull the building back by...
Exactly, yeah. The four feet isn't, isn't, the four feet might not even be implemented, that often. Yeah, definitely. Okay.
So, so real quick, so we're saying, uh, the daylight plane would start at eight feet, two inches, is that what we're saying?
No, what we're saying is leave it at eight feet because applicants can pull back.
Okay.
Yeah, so eight feet, six to twelve, and then, uh, the incentive, we can, uh, if everyone kind of agrees, we can, we can include that at, uh, eight feet, one-to-one. Um, but yeah, so moving forward, um...
Make sure if we...
I have to take this up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I have it up on my screen. Did you guys see it or no?
Yes, yeah.
So if the property, or, uh, so, um, so if this privacy impacts neighbors, if an applicant voluntarily increases the setbacks to be ten feet from the rear and eight feet from the interior side yard and has a roof pitch of either five-twelve or six-twelve, then the building division would expedite plan check review for this building permit application.
No, I don't think that's right. No, yeah, it was, it was basically that they wouldn't need to follow the six to twelve if they push it back eight feet. That they would be allowed to have a one-to-one, um, at, yeah. But again, they might, they might be well below, um, you know, that might, it might not have a huge effect on them, but it's just something that might incentivize, especially on the side.
What we're saying is the basic daylight plane is, as you described it, it's eight to twelve. At the property line and it has a six and twelve roof pitch, but if they're nice and pull back away from their neighbors...
Oh, okay, got it, got it. Okay, the opposite, the opposite. Okay, l- let me go back. I just, I wanna make sure I'm captured, so...
Yeah, so two, two separate sections, that's why, yeah.
So for the, for the regular, so no portion of the building shall intro, if it goes, starts at eight feet at the property line and increases at a roof pitch of five, five-twelve or six, oh, sorry, six to twelve.
I think, I think, I think six-twelve, yeah, yeah, six-twelve.
Six-twelve? And then not sloping up at a one-to-one ratio, is that correct?
That's, that, you get that as icing on the cake if you pull back.
Got it. So, ca- ca- uh, Commissioner Ahi?
Yes.
Um, if you would indulge me, uh, Greg is the one who I spoke with three or four times this week. Um, he does build these, is, is, would, if, could you indulge me to get his input on this? 'Cause he's the one who's probably gonna have to build a lot of these, is that okay, or?
Uh, sure, yeah, I mean, I, I, from what I believe Greg's, uh, correspondence was about, he, he preferred the Palo Alto, which was eight feet, uh, and then one-to-one. Um, and then, so this would be six to twelve, so it would be slightly less than that at that edge. Um, but I think that our biggest thing is kind of what Phoebe mentioned, that we don't want, um, them to be at four feet and to have, you know, twelve feet at that edge.
Okay.
That was kind of our, our concern on that, but, you know, they...
That's your right, Commissioner.
Yeah.
That's fine, that's fine, okay.
Okay.
All right. Can, can I ask a question, and it's obviously you guys are the architects, and, but, so we went from four feet to eight feet from the property line, uh, does that, if you went in, if you split that difference to six feet, does that buy you what we're trying to accomplish, or that's not sufficient?
My opinion, it should be significant, six feet is not significant, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, thank you.
Um, okay. Um, so if anyone, I think that the, the last part is just if anyone has any, um, kind of extra comments on not referring to daylight plane or the size, um, anything else that maybe caught your eye? So, Phoebe, you can go first.
Looking at fourteen fourteen twenty, which is definition, I wonder if we need to have for one or more persons in the definition of an independent living facility, if it's an independent living facility, who cares? I mean, people live there. That seems extraneous, but that's words missing. Um, living area means interior habitable space of a dwelling unit, including basements of attic if defined as habitable by the CBC. Uh, there's no definition of a basement or an attic in this. Um, the location permitted, Guido already changed a lot. He, we, state said you could put it, we'll tell you where you can put it, so all those are gone. Um, there's that change in fourteen forty oh forty where on B, it was the state mandated H, HDB, um, comment that accessory buildings shall not be sold or have their title transferred except as allowed by state law. I don't think we actually saw that one. Right? Isn't that B, wasn't there something to that effect that Jolie explained, there is a way to do it if it deeded and in perpetuity below mark of...
She just recommended, I, I don't wanna miss her, but I thought she said just keep it as is, 'cause it's a very, very small, small technicality in the law, and it's probably better just to write it as is, but if Jolie, if, if that's correct, Jolie.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that, is just as allowed by state law, so we don't get into the minutia that it is a nonprofit builder, blah, 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 yeah.
And I'm looking at, um, E in that section, it says accessory buildings are subject to the design standards and other zoning requirements of the zoning district unless they're inconsistent with state requirements.
Maybe you wanna look at that, that one feels backwards to me. I think what we wanna say is zoning and building standards are, will be in compliance with, in compliance with the state regulations, because this implies that there going to be design reviews, and in fact, we know that most of this ordinance is designed not to have design review. That was the intent of the state, so something to think about. And, let's see, I asked about that, I got that. You did change in M on this one, it's going to be, um, delayed as opposed to told, so that someone reading it who doesn't know the term of art, this is in M as in Mary, suspended, perfect. Perfect, okay. Um, as a total non sequitur, I would like to point out that most apartments in San Francisco and in New York City are smaller, a hell of a lot smaller than eight hundred and fifty square feet, and people live in them. So I don't think we should worry about whether these are not going to be good places to live. Once we've got it to their ceiling heights are more than seven and a half feet, I think we're gonna have a nice building and that'll be fine.
Um, I wanna catch, Phoebe, sorry to interrupt, but Guido, you just changed something wrong to what Phoebe had corrected in the first place. So you had by, you had mistyped it severed instead of served, and so you caught that severed wasn't right, but you put serviced back in, and that, uh, I think Phoebe, that it was that it should be served, right?
Right.
Yeah, serve by the primary resident.
Yeah, I, very, Jolie, it may be service. I mean, it's, it's not, okay. Serve, service is like you serve somebody papers, right, in court, but, okay, all right.
Not, not severed, that's why you were correcting it, you...
All right, I, I, I'll, I'll go back, I'll go back, guys, sorry, I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep you guys, so.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you, thank you, Sally.
Yeah.
I think in, um, H two, after we got to the daylight plane diagram, I think that that needs to be a notarized letter to the city acknowledging that if you miss parking, you may be making your main residence non-conforming if you wanna do previous additions. I think that's important. Which is why I would say letters should be notarized in case it's not the owner who is doing it.
All right.
I'm down to the design standards of architecture review, where I talked about this before, J one, two, and three, that if a building, if an ADU is not ministerially approved, the following architect, the following design standard may be applied, because if it's ministerially approved, you're not going to be dealing with it. And in number three on that item, I think it's a new single-family residential accessory dwelling unit, both feet to the little store inside, because if it's existing, I don't think we're gonna be dealing with it.
Okay, so what, what language are you, I'm sorry?
I just put the word new after A.
Oh, okay. Okay.
What is a passageway? What does number five mean?
Uh, I don't know, in, in other cities I've worked in, people would try to like have a detached unit, and then they would put like a breezeway connecting it, and then they would say, oh, it's connected to the house, and then they would try to get around whatever rules related to either impact fees or setbacks, or, that, that's why I stuck that in there.
Okay, so it seems to me that if you...
And I also think that actually, I can pull up the state law, I think that's actually...
Is it?
Yeah, I'm, I, you know, I'm almost certain that I could pull up the state law and, uh, I think it's actually, it says you can't require the passageway.
Yeah, yes, that's my recollection.
That was another game cities were playing where they were telling customers, oh, you couldn't have an ADU unless it was a certain feet away or it was attached, I, so...
But in this case, in the basic concept of planning law, I think Jolie will correct me, when we had detached accessory structures, they were conforming in very, very small setbacks because they were not connected with the main house, and if you connected them to the main house, you made the whole thing non-conforming. So I'm worried about this one somehow, hmm.
I had a difference, um, and maybe I'm wrong, but my interpretation of passageway meant like, so like you have a garage, a driveway in a garage and you go around the side to get to the back, but if you have an ADU, you have a second passage there that might usually be sent off, uh, it usually might be sent off, but you'd either have a second driveway or another way to get to the back of the house. That's what I assumed passageway meant. Breezeway is different than passageway.
Oh, then you need to define that, that's...
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
I pulled up government code six-five-eight-five-two-point-two as amended by the state, and it specifically says, no passageway shall be required in conjunction with the construction of a, an accessory dwelling unit.
The question is the definition.
Yeah, I think you should, you need to put it in the definitions then.
Okay.
Passageway between the CADU and the main house, passageway to the ADU from the exterior, that one's a little fuzzy.
Okay, yeah, here, let me just note firmness here, uh, put a definition in for, insert comment, put in a definition for, um, passageway.
About, Jolie, is it true at this moment in time that owners, if you have to occupy any part of a ADU, JADU or main house?
No, that's not correct. The JADU have, the, the JADU has to be owner occupied.
Okay, that, that was the one question I had, and I wanted to make sure that that was clear, and it's...
I, I created a little handout for the planners, let me pull that up real quick.
So either the JADU or the main structure in which the JADU sits must be owner occupied, is that...
Owner occupancy is required for the JADU?
But not for, not for just regular ADUs.
Okay, so...
JADU, JADU.
Right, if there's a JADU, the owner can either live in the main house or the little thing. But are, um, on point three of fourteen fourteen oh sixty, it says owner occupancy is required for the JADU. I think you need to clarify that the owner occupancy is required either for the JADU or in the main house to which the JADU is added, unless the owner and other government, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. Oh, okay, so you're saying for A, owner occupancy shall be required for the junior or the main...
You've got it, but there's another point where you don't have it.
Okay.
It's, you, you have a conflict when you said the owner occupancy is required for the JADU. It's just above fourteen fourteen oh seventy, it's the last paragraph before that.
The last paragraph, before, or is required, unless there's another, okay. Is required for the JADU or the main house, okay? All right?
Okay, thank you, Phoebe. Um, Sally, did you wanna go next about any, any other comments?
Yeah, I think I just have, um, I have one in the document, it's page five, um, of the ordinance, and it's section two, uh, little I, or one, whatever it is. So it's talking about an attached or detached, um, ADU. So the first one says the total floor air, area for an attached accessory ADU shall not exceed twelve hundred square feet, um, excluding basement areas, and shall not... exceed twelve hundred square feet, um, excluding basement areas and shall not be more than fifty percent of the floor of the existing or proposed residence. So, um, if the A D U, uh, this attached A D U were actually entirely in the basement area, this, it sounds to me, the way this is written anyway, that that twelve hundred square feet doesn't apply because all of the square footage is in the basement area. So presumably then the fifty percent of the, you know, not being more than fifty percent of the existing or, or proposed house would still apply. So what, uh, is that true and is that the intention?
Well, John, if you're still on the phone, my understanding is the basement area is not counted for F A R in Los Alamos, which.
That, that's correct.
So I'm trying to, the total floor area for an attached will not exceed one thousand two hundred excluding basement areas.
Yes.
Yeah. So for an example, if you had a house that had a, um, thirteen hundred square foot basement and that was still less than half of the total house on the ground level, um, all that thirteen hundred square foot is more than twelve hundred feet, but because it's in the basement, the way this is written, it, it's okay. It gets a pass as long as it's still less than fifty percent of the house. That's how this is written.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
And that's how the existing accessory regulations.
No, I, I'm actually, I don't see a problem with it. I'm just pointing it out.
Yeah. But you, your, your understanding is correct.
I will be transparent. The reason I, uh, this caught my eye is because this is actually our home where we have probably a fourteen hundred square foot basement, which is well below half the, the total square footage of the home. So if I wanted to convert the whole basement and if that square footage counted, then it would be more than twelve hundred square foot and it wouldn't work. But it's, it's basement area. So how does, you know, so, not that we're doing it, but I, that's just why.
But then, but then the basement is part of the house. It's within the confines of the house and therefore it would be a J A D U.
No, it can't be because it's more than five hundred square feet.
Right.
Right. No, so you wouldn't be able to convert the whole thing.
Not that, the way this is written, I would be able to because it excludes basement area.
Right. It'd be an A D U.
What, what's your recommendation?
Well, the question is, do we care?
I don't think we care, frankly, whether a whole lower level that is well less than half of a house is converted to, um, an A D U or not, at least, you know, I don't know why we would. Again, I don't plan to, so I don't have a vested motive in, in seeing this. And in fact, this is, I think, consistent with how we've had it for a while. I'm just pointing it out because I happen to know the situation.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it.
But what's the impact to the town?
Right. That's the question.
And if the impact to the town is nil, we really don't care. We're trying to do to preserve the existing quality of life in town and this is not jeopardized.
It doesn't change anything?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Um, thank you, Sally. Uh, was that, was that all you had?
Yes, that's all I had.
Okay. Um, so Commissioner Merrick, uh, did you have any last comments?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. Uh, then Commissioner Lee, any final comment on this?
No, no. Nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. Um.
Commissioner Ock, can I indulge me just to start at the top? Cause I have, I, I would hate to go to city council and not, I, I mean, I think we've captured everything. I just want to make sure. So, uh, so Phoebe added as defined by C B C. I will absolutely add the chart that you guys asked for. Uh, I'll have to figure out where to place it, but I'll certainly put that somewhere.
Are you considered bringing it back to us in its final format?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, yes.
Yeah, I especially, especially since, since we'll be adding that chart, I would like to bring it back to the commission.
So I was, um, trying to figure it out in AutoCAD. Uh, so that at eight feet, eight feet high and eight feet setback, the one to one would, at, at that wall would actually be sixteen. So I don't think it might be overkill to have the one to one incentive.
Oh, okay.
Um, but since we are meeting, uh, or since we're going to do one more review, maybe we can come up with, uh, an additional type of incentive, um, in the meantime. But, but yeah, I just didn't want to put it in if it's already, uh, known that it's going to be sixteen.
Okay.
But yeah, and then the only other thing that I wanted to bring up is just, uh, I think that we should just make it as, as easy as possible to kind of get these approved. So even if it's above the eight fifty, um, I don't know what planning, uh, would want to do to, as far as the process of over the counter, but some sentence that says kind of what that design over the counter.
Okay.
Process looks like. But again, I don't want to intrude if planning has their own kind of way of.
Yeah. Let me, let me circle back with John in terms of some, cause he's been with the city longer. So in terms of.
No problem.
The process.
Okay.
So, and we landed on eight feet, eight feet at the property with the, well, rough pitch for the daylight plane. And I'll have to change this graphic accordingly.
Maybe just want to circle back and tell us what the planning department would like to do in terms of, once they have to do a review, how we can make it as easy as possible for an applicant and for staff who basically do a checklist and get out.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, that's our, that's ideal because that's where a lot of cities are moving towards on this stuff, trying to have less planning involvement. Um, so yeah, if, if I could, yeah, but I'll, I'll, I'll circle back with John about that.
And can you clarify? Cause I think Jolie or somebody said that it was eight hundred and eight fifty and we had talked about just saying eight hundred. So where did we end up with that? And who, was that your input, Jolie? I don't remember.
That was, wait.
Fifty is what the state told us, so.
Eight fifty.
Now you're muted, uh, Jolie. You're muted.
Yes, okay. Eight fifty is, we can, maximum square footage, this is the state law for either an attached or detached. We cannot, um, require, um, that it be less than eight fifty and a thousand square feet if it's more than one bedroom. And then in another section of the, the law, it says the total floor area for detached accessory dwelling units shall not exceed twelve hundred square feet. So by saying a thousand or twelve hundred, we're fine for the square footage and it can be a thousand, um, but we just cannot have it less than a thousand square feet if it's more than one bedroom. So I think we're good with the, um.
Eight fifty.
Twelve hundred. I, I say we go, we would have to go with the eight fifty because that is the, we can't require something less only if it's in conjunction with the total floor area of the, um, when it's attached accessory, um, it has to be the at least eight hundred square feet or they, they, uh, we have to allow at least eight hundred square feet. And Guido, is that what the state was trying to explain to you? Because I was, I was looking through the code sections about the detached and then, you know, but clearly, and that was my understanding of this, going through it before, is eight fifty is the, um, minimum. And then the eight hundred, which is kind of confusing, is when it's con, combined with, um, size based on a pers, pers, percentage of the proposed or existing primary dwelling unit. So, I mean, Guido, you talked with the state, but.
Yeah, that, that.
Good. I think we're good with the limited to twelve hundred because we can go down to a thousand. Um, we can't go less than a thousand if it's more than one bedroom. And sometimes it's bedroom, sometimes it's square feet. So I didn't write this, but I do believe we should go with eight fifty. And in conversations with H T D, Guido could ask them if, if we could try eight hundred, but I believe it's going to be eight fifty. And that's everything I've read about the, these laws.
That's cool. That's what they said, yeah.
That's another reason to come back with us because Phoebe and Guido will have input from H T D so that there'll be some.
And all.
Some cases to hang our hats on, so to speak.
All right. Sounds good. And then I did the daylight plane and then we added that language out.
I have a question for commissioners. So you had pointed out that at one to one, we're going to have pretty tall structures, even eight feet from the wall. We can either leave it as it is, we can make that eight feet, ten feet, or we can, instead of having it be twelve and twelve, we could make it, instead of from six and twelve to twelve and twelve, we could make it six and twelve to nine and twelve. And that would pull it back down another couple of feet.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that, um, you know, obviously at, at four feet, it'd be ten at that edge. So I guess it just depends on at eight feet, what do we feel is, is the appropriate height, um, eight feet away from, from a parcel? Um, and then kind of, I guess, reverse engineer that. But, um, it's a good point in terms of, you know, do we want, if it's eight feet, do we want them to potentially start at, you know, fifteen or sixteen? Um, they might not, but, but yeah, it's a, it's a really good point.
Zuo pointed out, and it's been my experience, I'm sure everybody knows, if you have a daylight plane, people fill it.
Yeah, absolutely.
That is, and so I think we need to, as you say, Mayor, was reverse engineer it back because we're going to assume that we're going to get it.
Yeah. So I, I, yeah, so I think that maybe, maybe in between as, as far as like, you know, thirteen or fourteen, um, i- if, if we do say we want to go eight, if they do decide to go eight feet, you know, maybe we make it so that it has to stay at that, um, slope. Um, but I don't know. I, it kind of depends on what the consensus is. But I would say maybe thirteen or fourteen, um, maybe twelve, but that might be, um, maybe some people want more.
So at the edge. If it was twelve at that edge, it means that the interior ceiling plate, if it was a flat ceiling, would be, I think, at eleven feet or ten six. So.
I believe that at six to twelve, you could still get twelve feet at the edge at eight feet.
A lot.
That's a, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
A lot, yes.
I mean, I.
Yeah. So if, if.
Pull it back one feet. If you want to do that, make it pull back ten feet and then you get to be higher or stay at eight feet and go lower.
Yeah. So, so yeah, so even at eight feet away from the property, um, you know, we, we would still want it to be at eleven, let's say. Um, and then at ten, maybe we say, okay, then you can go twelve. Um.
And what pitch does that put us at?
Um.
Are you working on the geometry there?
Uh, trying to. Uh, if someone wants to, um, maybe if anyone has any other kind of points to make.
I had a question about the parking as long as Guido is still fooling around with stuff. We have a thing that says, um, one additional parking space shall be required for a newly constructed single-family residential A D U, which may be located, blah, blah, blah. Um, is it covered or uncovered? I think we need to specify.
Hmm, that's a good point.
And we also need to say, it says the parking stall will not be required, blah, blah, blah. We probably should save aside. I mean, I know it's in another part of the code, but one of the good things about the code cleanup that's been going on, ongoing in the city is that we're trying to get the information in one place so that if you're in a, uh, an area, you don't have to keep flipping back and forth to find out where's the parking standards. So we might say one additional parking space of X by X, covered or uncovered shall be required. And that's on page seven, right under the, uh, daylight plane diagram in section I.
Parking diagram. Wait, one, sorry, what page?
Page, um, seven, right after the diagram. It's, we're talking about parking on I, H I, okay. And I says, is it, it's uncovered and it's not by eighteen? Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so of five to twelve at, uh, eight feet high and eight feet across, uh, would be eleven feet, four inches. Um, so, I mean, I guess, I don't know, it's kind of in, it's, it's kind of in the middle, but, um, it might be something that we can maybe, I can play around with kind of different ways of doing that at, at four feet, eight feet and ten feet. And then we can kind of, next time, I guess, gather and, and discuss. Um.
Commissioner Aki, uh, one of the planners is really good with graphics. If you, if you, uh, if you or the commission want to give me a suggestion or a couple, if you want to email me, uh, later today or this or whatever, then we can, I can come up with some graphics for the group.
Okay, sure.
Well, could we, could we use the, the one that's, uh, in the ordinance as a kind of standard and then kind of work off of that and change the divisions?
The eight feet for one to one?
Well, uh, there are various different scenarios that we want to look at. Just practically that it just.
Yeah, we should be able to.
Yeah, it's a really good point. I think it, it might be helpful for the next time to do, um, seven feet and eight feet at five to twelve, six to twelve and one to one, or and maybe even eight to twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seven or eight feet and then what? I'm sorry.
Uh, and then five to twelve, six to twelve, and then one to one, uh, maybe eight to twelve as well. Just, just so that maybe we can see, uh, exactly kind of how, what that edge condition would, would look like.
Okay.
Uh, that's just my thoughts. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think you need an, uh, an overall or a height to the top of the sill plate or, or something to, to kind of get that overall height, right?
Overall goal is for us to figure out if there's eight inches of concrete showing.
Yeah.
Play height. And there's ten to twelve inches of roof structure. What is that point? Right there at the top of the roof before you get to the overhang going past it, which will occur at four feet, eight feet, ten feet, whatever, the property line. So we can get, and you can have the graphics with, um, six standing next to it or Mr. Five, if it's me, it's sensitive to human scale is relative to this, or even show a six foot property line fence so that all of our commissioners, even those who are not here tonight, can get a vision of what it's like if there was a six foot person standing next to a six foot fence in this alley between a detached building and the property line. How tall is it going to be? And that, I think, would be the best demonstration that will let us choose among the choices of what best communicates the value of feeling like you're not in your neighbor's pocket looking over the fence.
Yeah. Very good. Yeah, that's a very good point. Yeah, cause I think that we think of one to one and six to twelve, but I think what Phoebe said, if it's four feet away and potentially twelve feet, I think that some people might not like having a six foot or twelve foot fence. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So, yes. Anyone else?
Uh, we didn't say this. Guido, this is an incredibly good job you've done. We fixed the hell out of it.
No, you know, honestly, I, I appreciate the feedback because you guys all have a lot of really good professional experience in different areas. And you're actually helping me think through like the design review process and you guys have been very thoughtful about the, the daylight plane. So all of it's super helpful to me. So thank you.
Well, but it's, it's a nasty bit because as Jolie said, the laws are inconspicuous. The state hasn't.
Yeah.
We don't have it together. And so we're sort of stuck trying to do it. You did a really good, because you did such a good job, we had a good time editing.
And like I said, I do apologize. I didn't, the state didn't get back to me until four. If I had their edit earlier in the week, I would have absolutely, uh, sent it to the group earlier, but they didn't get back to me. So that's, I had to roll with what I had. So thank you for all of your very important input. So.
Great. Um, thank you so much. And then, so I guess now, uh, if we, someone wants to make a motion to continue this, um, and then we can vote.
Your, your next meeting.
Uh, let's see, I don't have the, I move that we, uh, continue this to the, would it make sense for the next scheduled meeting? Date certain the next meeting or would that be sufficient time, Guido and John?
The next meeting is. The next meeting is May the seventh?
For me, yes, the only hiccup would be, um, I wanna run all these edits by the state, so I'm not sure if John is still on, if what your thoughts are in terms of time meeting or. But I, I would, I could certainly aim for May sixth and if I can, I'll let the group know.
Pardon me?
Um, cause we wanna make it a date certain, I think, for ease of, uh, Jolie's nodding, so, um, I mean, if you.
Can you hear?
A month or so, but i- if we can get it done by May sixth, then I think we'd all, you know, like to move it forward. So, um, yes, hold on.
Can you, can you hear me?
Well, whatever the, uh, next meeting date would be, um, no, and then John's not chiming in, so maybe he's.
May the seventh?
Not at all during all this, um, scintillating conversation.
Can you?
The mission is the first sensor, May seventh.
Can you hear me now, May s- May seventh?
Ah, there he is. May seventh, um, John, do you think that date makes sense?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
All right, so, uh, I, yes.
I'll, I'll aim for May seventh and if I can, I will communicate to the group.
Okay, great, um.
The only issue is that it's not continued to it, I mean, then I don't know how you have to handle that, Jolie, can, um.
Well, if, if you continue it and then we don't have the meeting, then we just post something and then it just says it's continued, so. I'll, I'll, I'll figure that out, Jolie.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then do we, should we get a roll call for, for that or just all, all the, okay, um.
Aye, respect, yes?
Aye. Aye, Commissioner Ahi?
Aye, Commissioner Meadows? Somebody poke, Commissioner Merrick, doesn't give us a poking. Aye, he says, okay.
That works. Perfect, um, okay, so the, uh, motion will continue or the item will continue to the next meeting? Um, next up, commission reports and comments.
I, I was at the last city council meeting, which I wasn't sure was gonna be on the website as an audio, so I stayed awake for it till eleven thirty in the morning. Um, there were, it was, the first, um, item in the public hearing was Mercer's Building at forty-eight forty-six and forty-eight fifty-six El Camino Real, where they were requesting a reduction in parking space width so that they could reconfigure the parking for some advantages they felt, but city council did not feel that the advantages were valid enough to do that, so that was denied. Um, there is a resolution for the story pole exception for the gas station site at the corner of Los Altos Avenue and El Camino Real and the, um, council people felt that there was insufficient information being presented as to the reality of the presentation, so Anita and Lynette formed a subcommittee who are going to help the applicant come up with a way of modifying the story poles that they would like to do in such a way that the gas station can stay in business because as someone pointed out at the meeting, where normally the lead time from story poles to breaking ground might be a year and a half to two years, it might very well be up to four years at this point because of what's going on with the pandemic, so that one is, um, being continued. And then there was a discussion for a resolution of library joint powers and that's on hold. And then they talked a lot about emergency measures, getting money to our small businesses in town who are just taking a horrible hit, as well as the public service, um, charitable organizations. And so they're working, I think nobly, um, to find money to give out as grants as opposed to loans so that businesses can survive, cause when you think about it, we don't have chain stores in our town. I mean, Chico's is the only one we've got, maybe Baskin Robbins, but it's a franchise. In fact, the town is all small businesses and they're just being creamed, so.
Thank you, Phoebe, um, hey, I should mention that, I don't know if anyone knows the website, what's open, losaltos.org? Um, Kim Mosley put that website together, so, uh, it's a good, uh, basically database of all the restaurants. Um, anyways, anyone else have any, uh, reports or comments? If not, I'll move to potential future items with, um, John.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I could cover for John.
All right, yeah.
Sure. So what do we have coming up, um, A D U ordinance, obviously, May seventh. Uh, he's been working with Jolie on some boarding house zoning text amendments. Uh, John and I are starting to work on, uh, updating the zoning code to have objective standards that will be coming to the commission. Um, there is a permit that's been submitted for a new E O C building, that's gonna be coming to the commission later this year. And the reach code stuff, which I'm not.
What's an E O C?
Uh, emergency operations center.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Police department?
Yep.
Thank you.
And those are some of the bigger stuff that I'm tracking and then.
I thought the reach codes weren't coming to us, I did see that there's a webinar we can sign up for, but.
No, I think, I, I'm not, I'm not involved, I was just saying that that's a, I, I know item that he's keenly interested in. I'm not involved with that much. Um, and then my big task is, uh, getting the objective standards for the zoning code and getting the annual housing element progress report to the council once this COVID stuff gets lifted. And in July for the commission, we are gonna be getting our, uh, R E N A number from the state. So that's something I'll, I'll have to start, that'll kick off the housing element process later this year, so.
And actually, and I was gonna ask, Guido, if you could accept for ending March tenth, could you, when you come back, give us a sense of how many A D Us have been permitted in town?
Sure.
Twelve ones?
Yeah, I know John has those numbers, he helped me when I was putting together the housing element, so, let me, okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Uh, Jolie, do you have a comment? Oh, you're muted.
Uh, John just texted me and he says his microphone here is, isn't working and he's been permanently muted, so.
Oh.
He's still around, so, uh, I wanted to let you know that. And the other thing, Guido, that you and John have, we've talked about, um, is the S B three thirty checklist and we'll probably.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta come up with that, so.
And is that gonna be coming to Planning Commission or, um, or is it just gonna come with our objective standards?
No, but you and I should talk, cause I'm new to the city, I don't know if, did Barbara Kautz give the Planning Commission an overview of all the housing laws?
No, that's coming up in, I believe, next council meeting, if there's gonna be, I thought I'm doing the overview of the housing laws.
Okay.
At the next meeting and I thought planning commissioners were going to be invited.
Oh, okay, let me, uh, let me, I'll have to talk, yeah, so next, April twenty-eighth is the next city council meeting and at six P M, I believe, that's when Barbara Kautz was gonna go over all the bills, Jolie, is that correct?
Yes, no, it's just gonna be me now.
Oh, you, okay.
Me and John Biggs and me, uh, John Biggs and I will be giving the presentation, so, and it's gonna be high level, um, and because there's a lot to go through, but, um.
I really think the planning commission would benefit from that as well, Jolie, so you and I can talk.
And I understand it was gonna be a joint meeting, that's what I.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's what I thought, or, or I can do it to the Planning Commission at their next meeting.
Uh, John, John just texted, he said, yes, all commissioners are invited to attend the council meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I didn't know about that, so.
But, but, but to your point, Jolie, S B three thirty, I absolutely, or you, if you want, we should definitely brief the commission cause that fundamentally affects how a planning commission operates, as you know, and maybe the commissioners don't. The S B three thirty application is submitted, the city is limited to five public hearings or meetings. And so that absolutely impacts the commission and so, yeah, you and I should probably talk offline about briefing the commission on that.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay, um, I think that's about it, um, hope everyone's doing well, uh, please stay safe. And it is nine forty-five, uh, meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, thanks, everyone.
Good job, everyone.